All right, we are live streaming.
Great.
Let me know if others join as well, Chris, because I can only see, oh.
We are live streaming. Oops, sorry, no.
Great. Let me know if others join us.
Okay, we have.
Six.
Hi, Case, can someone say something? I don't hear anything.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear us? Can you hear us? Can you hear us? We're speaking. Maybe try your speakers.
I don't hear anything.
We can hear you.
Somebody just needs to get off the phone and call her. She doesn't hear us.
We can hear you.
So for us to keep saying we can hear her is unhealthy situation.
No, we just sent a note to her in the chat.
All right.
Gretchen is here. Hector is here.
Great. I don't have her number. I only have Janice's email. I don't have a number for her.
Edward, just before we start, we, um, we the, the speaker, the, the public commenters are in the, are in the attendee list. So just if I'm sharing my screen, just please update.
Sure, I got you.
But Janice is going off and coming back in to see if that works.
Yep.
According to my clock, it's now five thirty, so I'm inclined to start. Okay to start? Edward, is it okay to start?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you.
Good. Uh, the meeting will come to order. The time is now five thirty PM on Thursday, January twentieth, twenty two. That's not true. This is February. I'm sorry. Anyway, it's five thirty PM. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Lee, Chairperson of the Commission, African American man wearing a black turtleneck sweater. I'll now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Cora. Cora. Julianne.
Present.
Demetrius. Cecily.
Just promoted Demetrius.
Present, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Present. Cecily.
Present.
Janice. Janice is trying to get in. Kimber. Maggie. Carla. Carla.
Present. Can you hear me?
Yes, we heard you. Hector.
Present.
Gretchen.
Present.
And now back, Demetrius, are you with us?
Present.
Great. A quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at opengovoffice@dc.gov. Notice that the meeting was posted in the DC Register, on the commission's website, dcrx.dc.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government's Central Meetings Calendar at opendec.gov. The meeting has been conducted in the hybrid for, uh, format with, um, commissioners joining remotely via the Zoom platform. The meeting is live streamed on the commission's YouTube channel. Electronic recorded of the meeting will be available for the online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to make in the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes and hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands and the Kotschank and the Piscataway people. We pay true respects to the elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Are there any objections to the agenda that was previously circulated? Hearing no objection, the agenda stance is adopted. Uh, I will look for a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting, uh, January twenty third, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five meeting. Any?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Great, thank you. So, and, and as my chairman's welcome, I want to read something to, um, to the group that I prepared, uh, that I think it's time to give them where we are. We're all reeling in the growing aspects of the various executive orders and other federal government actions which affect the arts in DC and the arts across the country. I would suggest that none of us can crystal ball the full extent of changes coming our way. But we can and should stay on course to ensure this agency champions the growth and health of the DC arts ecosystem, making CAH a high performing and professionally enriching organization which distributes the right funds to the right grantees and programs at the right time in a timely and efficient manner. This is the course we're on, and we will adjust if necessary and where necessary, but we will stay on course. I thought it was important to not overlook overall environment in which we live daily, but also to reassure our constituents, our grantees, our staff, the arts consuming public, that we have not taken our eyes off the ball or off the prize. Please keep us honest as we navigate these uncharted waters as best we can and partner with us to the benefit of the arts and humanities in the nation's capital. I thought it was important to recognize where we are. Uh, we don't have solutions yet, but we'll stand on course and we are pivoting if necessary, as much as we have to, to keep on our mission. With that being said, our presentation today is Byron Gilliam-Cloyde, who's a visual artist. Uh, Mr. Gilliam-Cloyde, are you prepared? Is he on?
I do not see them in the, uh, in the, in the, they're not present. Nope.
Okay. If he comes in later, perhaps we can still have the presentation. But moving on to the public comment portion, we have a couple of individuals signed up for public comments this evening. The commission welcomes your comments. They're very important to us. Please note that comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the chair. Note that we will not be engaging in dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the commission, about your views. If members of the public have factual questions, staff will be glad to follow up via email. When I call your name, you may begin your comments. We'll start with Philip Van Sluton, Ward Four.
Yes, my name is Philip and I, uh, live in Ward Four. I'm a DC resident. And sorry, I take hesitating a moment to start my video. There we go. And, um, my, uh, proposal comment is for a, uh, DC independent, um, artist convention. Um, there is a lot, a wealth of talent here. Part of the reason why I moved to DC is because there's so many artistic venues um, of all types. I mean, whatever you're into, um, there's something for it here in DC. But you have to kind of be in the know as to where to go. Um, and so if you're a resident, you kind of, it's easy to get into your niche, you know? And so anyway, um, I propose a, and I've been to a lot of conventions at the convention center. And usually for Awesome Con down in the basement, they have, um, a space for, uh, independent creatives. I'm an author and so a writer. And so there's a space for independent writers and things like that to sell their stuff. So, uh, DC IndieCon would be a centralized opportunity for different local independent artists, organizations to exhibit, promote, or sell their products. Uh, this event could initially be held at the, uh, convention center, which is an incredible space to have classes upstairs and and a marketplace downstairs and later move to mini conventions across the, uh, DC library system. And it wouldn't conflict with, uh, things that you guys already have in the works, uh, such as, uh, jazz festivals and things like that. People can do like samplers here. And, um, or the Art Week, which, um, I love just walking down the street like in Annapolis has their, uh, uh, Second Sunday's festivals and things like that, a chance to just see culture alive. And it really brings a community in a city to life. And so, um, this would kind of complement that and kind of be a gathering place for people to see what's available at different times of the year that they can go through and kind of plan their year for it. So that's all I have. Thank you for this time.
Well, thank you. I personally think it's a great idea. It's very much aligned with the things we're trying to do, the Art Week DC program, et cetera. So we will follow up with you to talk about how we can begin to actualize something like this. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, our next public comment, Lenny Campello.
I am, I am here. Thank you for, uh, inviting me. Um, I'm of Cuban ancestry, so, uh, bear with me if, if, uh, three minutes, I could be here for three hours talking, so, uh, I will stay to my three minutes though, I promise. Um, so I, I submitted a paper as well.
You're frozen.
Twenty twenty six.
Mr. Campello, could you go back because you were frozen for a while? So we may not have heard a lot of what you said.
Okay. Excellent. Uh, hopefully I can get the chairman to give me my time back. I'm just kidding.
Yes, we'll give you extra time.
Thank you. So let me start from the beginning. I submitted a paper with some after I reviewed the rough draft, which the commission was nice enough to provide to me ahead of time of Art Week DC with some comments and some recommendations, some rudder adjustments. I'm a former Navy officer, so that's why I use that naval term. Uh, I, um, I have a lot of experience in art fairs. Um, some of you may know me from the fact that I have been entangled with the DCR Commission for the last twenty plus years. I've been a, a panelist many, 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 many times over the past. Uh, and, uh, former galleries, the two Fraser galleries, I started doing art fairs in Miami, London, South Africa, um, in LA and now in Austin, uh, since two thousand and six. And over that time period, I had learned a lot of, uh, about the, the art fair world and how it is processed and all that. I was also hired by Ramsey Art Fairs at one point. And they're the ones that do worldwide fairs, Affordable Art Fair. I was also, uh, hired by Art DC back about fifteen years ago when they had two DC based art fairs, uh, in the convention center. So a lot of that stuff that I put in that paper comes from, uh, empirical experience, not from theory. And I think there are things that over the years, I think our city brings, uh, a unique formula to the art fair world. Uh, the commission has hit on really some key points in there. And I'm not going to go over the entire paper because it's, uh, several pages. But the main thing that I would recommend is to reexamine the location. I know that it sounds great to have it at a convention center, but I, I would, uh, have the commission potentially examine the potentiality, and I just invented that word, of how they do it in Miami during Art Basel Week, the largest art dance in the world. There's twenty six art fairs in Miami during that period. I've been there every year except for the COVID year since two thousand and six. And what most of those fairs are, they're held in giant outdoor tents. My idea about fifteen years ago, when I first proposed it to the commission, was to do something similar to that in the National Mall. They already do those kind of fairs for other things, uh, craft and, uh, and, and a few other kinds of fairs. So it's nothing, uh, new to, to set up a gigantic, uh, tent, the outdoor kind. And inside of that, the different kinds of art fairs, you guys have hit it on the head with the potentiality of having the embassies participate. And that, the, as the lady before me mentioned, the Washington DC area, the greater DC area, the DMV, by the way, according to the city paper, uh, I invented that term in two thousand and three in my blog, Daily Campello Art News. I didn't even know that until the research, but I'll take credit. Um, our, our scene is, is full of, of, uh, things that, uh, no other city in the world can offer. And the embassy art scene, separate from, separate but integrated into DC art scene, as well as Mexican Cultural Institute, uh, the Gotha Institute, they offered things that can be added to that Art Week. You guys are beginning to do it. I know you're already working potentially with the Embassy of China. But I would encourage everyone to become familiar with the paper that I submitted. And because I think there's more that can be done. This Art Week DC can really be one of a kind on the planet. And I think, but I think it has to be done right. The main thing, of course, is what Miami does is to bring collectors from all over the world to discover the DC art scene. I'm going to shut up in about thirty seconds, but before I do, I also wanted to do a, 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 a paid, uh, ad in a sense. Uh, I am currently in the process of curating an exhibition called Women Artists at the DMV. And, and so far I have reviewed over four thousand female artists in that area. That gives you an idea of how many artists we have working around here. The exhibition will be held in eight, eight different art venues in DC at the Katzen Museum, um, in Alexandria, at the Athenaeum, in McLean, Project for the Arts, in Maryland, at Artists and Makers Galleries, a woman owned gallery, at the Strathmore Galleries, and at Pyramid Atlantic. And just yesterday, we added the Writers Center Gallery in Bethesda and the Montpelier Art Center in Laurel. So eight venues. Right now, I can only, I only have space for about two hundred and fifty artists out of four thousand. So you can imagine, uh, the wealth of art that is in this city. Women artists at the DMV, eight venues, uh, September twenty twenty five. And I will gladly entertain any questions if there's time for that, or you can email me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So first, uh, thank you for your enhancements, suggestions around enhancements around Art Week DC. The good news, there are two pieces of good news. First good news is the report that was presented by the consultant was for us to react to and evolve as we wish. So that was not written in stone. And we heard from Art Basel when we first visited three years ago that if they had it to do again, they would have had multiple locations, not just one location. So your notion of other locations on the mall or wherever is very much in line with what we heard from them. And we will put that in our thinking as we evolve the plan for Art Week DC. Uh, the second thing is, thank you for making us aware of your event. If you can share that with us, we can, you know, share it more broadly as well and look forward to being a part of it. So we thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, now we'll move on to the, uh, director's report. Aaron.
Everybody, African American male, balding with a, a gray sweater on. We'll start with our staff updates. Interviews have been completed for our new procurement analyst position. And once finalized, we will be announcing the new hire to the team commissioners and community. We have also been discussing our telework policy and our return to work plan. At our upcoming All-Star staff meeting, we plan to garner more feedback around the proposed action that we hope will align us closer to the needs of the community and district government. Our staff has begun an exercise with DCHR that will help us properly structure the agency, create tier structures, and to ensure pay is aligned with duties, grades, and steps. As this process continues, I'll, uh, keep the commissioners updated. All the managers and the executive director have been assigned executive coaches, and these sessions are currently underway. Um, the team has been working to finalize a new grant management system to pilot for our, uh, possible future adoption. Uh, we successfully piloted a new post award system this year, and I believe I've talked about that before, that resulted in improved pacing of grant award dollars reaching grantees in the pilot group we tested, which was GOS this past year. We hope to announce next month which GMS has been chosen. Instructions will be given to the pilot group we will choose to work with, and we will not implement any GMS until we have a successful pilot program to ensure compatibility. As a general reminder, if any of our grantees are still awaiting payment or still gathering documents, please reach out to your grant manager for more information. Uh, for, uh, for the purpose of our oversight hearings, performance oversight hearing for CAH is scheduled for March sixth at the budget oversight hearing and the budget oversight hearing for April the tenth. The team has begun preparations for the performance oversight and is working to answer the questions sent over by the committee of the whole. Uh, those wishing to testify, please register at, uh, dc council.gov. For more information, reach out to andrew.jacobson@dc.gov. We want to touch on the Bagabai exhibition. I would like to thank the public arts team, along with events, communications, and the curators of Fifty Years of Hope and Ha Hahs for what has been an inspiring exhibition. Uh, the closing reception with musical performance will take place Sunday, March first from four PM to six PM, and more information will be shared by our public arts committee. Um, they can poetry out loud. I want to remind our commissioners and those watching, Poetry Out Loud is scheduled, uh, for Saturday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty five, at Planet Word. That is nine two five thirteenth Street Northwest. We have thirteen confirmed schools participating, adding five new schools this year, which are Bard High School, Duke Ellington School of the Art, for the Arts, Jacinte International, HD Woodson High School, and Caesar Chavez High School. I want to give a big shout out to our arts learning coordinator, Andrea Brown, for her hard work and dedication towards this effort. If you have any questions, please reach out to andrea.brownthree@dc.gov. So that three is very important. Andrea.brownthree@dc.gov. Strategic Plan. Interviews for, uh, by OCP have started regarding the procurement of a company to conduct our strategic plan, and the committee has been formed and finalized. CAH, uh, committee will be convening for the consensus meeting the afternoon of Monday, March third. We anticipate, uh, once OCP conducts its final review, the award recommendation will be finalized and vendors will be notified the week of March tenth. As this process continue, uh, continues, I will keep the commissioners updated. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
I was gonna say, commissioners, any questions for Aaron?
Yeah, I have a question. Why are we having another strategic? I thought, what happened to the strategic plan we did before?
Um, it is time to have it renewed. It was done during the pandemic and we have them renewed, uh, every, uh, three to four years.
Well, have we done everything on it?
We are in line to have done, uh, a majority of what was outlined. We will be building up on that plan. But that plan was really focused a great deal on, uh, how we were responding, uh, from the, from the posture we were in in the pandemic.
So that retreat we had, uh, those two days, that, that didn't have anything to do with a strategic plan. That was, what was that? Because that was what, last year?
No, that was, that was just, um, and, um, it's the same retreat between the commissioners and the managers.
Yeah.
We're looking to do that again, actually. We, we would have hoped to have kind of done it beforehand, but we had a couple of issues with the vendor, but we think we have some of those, uh, worked out. So we hope to, uh, be reaching out to the commissioners relatively soon with, uh, uh, some potential, uh, updates with that.
And, and who's going to determine, or how do we determine who the facilitator is?
Uh, who's the, we were going to go with the same facilitator that had been chosen the last time? Um, who had worked with us? We hadn't, I hadn't heard any, uh, thing different from that.
But, but that is an option.
Uh, yeah, yes, if you, if there's another facilitator or someone we would like to go with, um, uh, we would, we can definitely look at that.
Okay.
Let me clarify a little bit more. That strategic plan, the last plan was done just as I arrived and barely had input from me. So that's twenty twenty one. So it is, we're overdue for another plan. The retreat that we did was post the strategic plan. Um, and that created some other things we needed to do as well. So I think we really do need an update. And to your point, Cor, we need to say from the last plan, what did we achieve? What didn't we achieve? Do we want to fill those gaps and go forward even more in this next plan? Uh, and for the facilitator, I think we should look at all options and look at the best option for facilitating the offsite that we're going to do with the staff. Does that answer your question, Cor?
Yes, it's very helpful.
Any other questions on the, the executive director's report? Thank you, Aaron. We will go to finance. Is Kimber with us? If not, it's my understanding Brandon is not here, but Martine, I think is going to, who's presenting the finance report?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner, that would be me. Uh, Martine Fernandez here. Brandon is out this week and, uh, I believe Kimber gave us a heads up that she wouldn't be able to attend.
Great. Well, thank you.
Sure thing. Okay, so we can, uh, go to the first page. Um, nothing drastic shifting from month to month. Uh, as you can see, there's last month's report was about thirty nine percent available left in the grants line. Uh, we're now at thirty, so continuing to disperse things. Most of the remaining funds are from the facilities and buildings and, um, capital, small capital grant projects, uh, lines. And yeah, that's just an overview of the admin total. The next two slides, if we want to move on, go a little further into those administrative costs, uh, whether it's the personnel costs or contractual services. Again, not a huge shift in spend from last month. Um, same here, just a little more detail on, on those admin spends. And then the last slide, um, parses out the spend on the different grant programs. Uh, just to compare to February last year, for the neighborhood arts funded, um, grant programs, we had about fifty percent of our funding available in February twenty twenty four, and we're now at below twenty percent remaining. So we've managed to push grants out, um, both for GOS and for the neighborhood arts projects much, much faster this year. I think for GOS, there's only, uh, two or three left to pay. The grants team can comment more specifically on that. Um, so we're pretty pleased with.
In the spirit of brand, in the spirit of bragging, could you repeat that again, please?
Uh, yeah, of course. So at this time last year, we had only just, we had only processed fifty percent of our neighborhood arts grants. Um, and this year we're actually at, uh, seventy two percent processed at the same, um, at the same juncture. So, um, we're, we're moving a couple of times faster this year, basically.
Round of applause for the full team. Round of applause, everybody.
So I didn't want to run past that because that's major. Now, we may want to do yet better in the next year. But, uh, when we make progress, I think it's important to recognize the progress.
Uh, definitely, yeah. We, we hope to improve on that even more next year, just because first time you try anything, you're always going to run into some, some speed bumps and, um, yeah, we, we have some lessons learned to apply for the next cycle.
Commissioner Janice Kim, I think, has her hand up. Janice?
Go on, Commissioner.
Let's go off mute.
Hi, Martin. Sorry about that. I do have a question and, and this is of course my fault because I don't have it written down here anywhere about the, uh, facilities and building budget that we have outstanding. And I wanted to see when that was, uh, going to be looked at, when the panelists for that particular line item will be starting for this, for this cycle.
My understa-, uh, for this cycle as in, um, the applications that would be submitted in this cycle? Or are you referring to, uh, the award decisions that were made already? And Terrell has his hand up, so.
Okay, are there, are there any, um, grant recipients already allocated for any of this fund?
Yeah, so the capital small projects have already been awarded. So small capital projects, that grant has already been awarded. We're in the process of doing those POs, but because that grant opens up later in the year, the panel process takes place later in the year, so. But because that grant opens up later in the year, the panel process takes place later in the year, so the P O's go out later. So. We're in the process of starting those P O's for going out. But that.
Okay, so this is later, but it's already done. This is for later this year. Yeah. Cause I keep seeing that huge number. Um, when we have these uh, finance meetings and I'm. Of course, wanting to make sure that we get that distributed.
Yeah, we try to stagger some of the.
During your schedule, but I, I just wanted to make sure that that's on everybody's radar. Okay, great. And how late would that, when is that?
So we're in the process, we've completed the vetting. Um, we've sent the award letters out. So we've brought, we're collecting documents. So we're in the process of sending out P O's. So we're looking at the P O's to start going out within the next couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and to just add, add some detail to what Terrell said, um. We'll be using the same system to create requisitions for this, so it should move pretty quickly. Once, once we have the needed materials.
I know. Great. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks. Martine, more?
Um, I think that was it from my end. If there are any specific questions related to. Um, where things are at or uh, feedback that you've gotten, then um, we're happy to, to provide some insight if possible.
Other questions on the finance report? Somebody should mute. Uh, so thank you, Martine. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We'll go on to grants and Terrell, I think you're going to present today.
That is correct. Hi, everyone. Uh, Terrell Johnson, Senior Grants Officer. Here, um, I am a African American male wearing a white shirt and a gray cardigan. So to start off, F Y twenty six, we have exciting grant opportunities opening soon. Apply for our general operating support, G O S, East Arts, uh, E A and project events or festival are P E F programs. All of our grants, general operating support, East Arts, P E F individuals and P E F organizations. Open on Tuesday, March eleventh, and they will all close on Tuesday, April twenty second. We will have, um, so they'll be open for about six weeks and we'll have workshops throughout that period. Um, so feel free to ask us any questions, drop in on a workshop if you have any questions about that. Become a panelist with our new grants opening up. That means we have a new call for panelists. So I just wanted to go over um, what you could look forward to as a panelist. Um, and what we look for in our panelists. So. Help shape the future of arts and humanities in D C by serving on the C A H Grant Review Panel. We're seeking passionate individuals with experience in the arts humanities. To evaluate grant applications, what panelists do. Provide critical reviews, comments and scores on grant applications. Your evaluations will directly impact funding recommendations. Panels are diverse in age, race, gender, background and artistic discipline. Qualifications, residents of the D C metropolitan area and surrounding areas. Experiencing the arts or humanities, arts administrator, artists, administrators, educators, gallery professionals, curators. And critics. Uh, commitment. You review roughly between twenty five and thirty applications in a time span of three or four, three to four weeks. Participate in pre-panel review online, twenty to thirty hours estimated. Attend an online video conference panel meeting unless otherwise noted. And there will be a payment of a two hundred and fifty dollar gift card at the end of the panel season. Ready to make a difference? Learn more and apply to, to be a panelist at our website, D C arts dot D C dot gov. If you have any additional questions, contact Kayla Williams at Kayla dot Williams at D C dot gov. Um, F Y twenty five grant update. Uh, we're happy to report significant progress on F Y twenty five grant agreements. Here's the breakdown. And this is even increased um, since our uh, turned this in this morning. So right now, um, we have. Uh, one thousand and six out of um, one thousand and a hundred and fifty five grants, that's eighty seven percent. Have been fully executed. We've established nine hundred and twenty eight purchase orders, representing eighty percent of our grantees. Again, even today. Um, I seen twenty five more purchase orders go out since I sent this over. So. Um, that number is constantly growing. We sincerely appreciate your patience and the grace you have provided. We're working diligently to get. Uh, the completion rate to a hundred percent. Missing documentation, we can help. If you are unsure about any required documentation for your grant agreement. Please reach out to your grant manager directly. They're happy to assist and can provide additional resources to help you secure what's needed. And that is my report.
Any questions, anyone? Uh, thank you for the progress made. I know we aspire to a hundred percent even quicker. But these are good numbers, so let's keep it, keep it moving in that direction. So thank you. Thank you to the grants team as well. Uh, public arts, Carla.
Yes, 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 yes. Thank you. Um, I'm Carla Sims. I'm an African American female. Uh. And. Wearing, I'm sorry. And um, I am going to turn this over to Karen Miller. So that she can give us the update.
Hi, everyone. I'm Corinne Miller. I'm the Public Arts Manager. I'm a white woman with glasses, brown hair, and I'm wearing a pink jacket and I use she/her pronouns. Um, so the Public Art Committee met last week on Wednesday, February twelfth. Um, and as a summary, the Public Art Team continues its work with F Y twenty five grantees and programs. Uh, while laying some serious groundwork for F Y twenty six efforts, including plans for upcoming requests for. Applications, uh, work on existing programs as well as new initiatives. So current work and planning areas include development of a collections management policy. The creation of standard operating procedures as a way of clarifying and codifying our existing processes. And then the team is also working through plans to collaborate with the European Union delegation on a temporary loan of Art Bank Works. Prelim- preliminary development of a metro arts rating fellowship to respond to the lack of arts criticism. And research and development around an initiative to map C H's collection of public art. The team has also been working on several public programs, including a recent Business of the Arts program on public art. Um, and on February eighth, there was a Vietzine event and talk held in the gallery, attracting more than eighty attendees. Um, so Director Myers mentioned the um, F Y twenty five art exhibition curatorial grant and the current show, Fifty Years of Hope and Ha Ha's. Um, it's been a successful exhibition that celebrates the expansiveness of the diaspora rooted locally in the D M V. So the exhibition is the first of its kind in D C, Maryland and Virginia to showcase Vietnamese American artists. And the curators are Philippa Hughes and Anthony Lay. So they've done a number of um. Public programs and the final one will be on Saturday, March first from four to six P M. So it'll be a closing reception. Um, with a musical performance as well. So we hope to see folks there before it closes. Um, an update on F Y twenty five Art Bank Program Grant. So the grant administration for F Y twenty five Art Bank is moving forward. And more than half of the grantees have been paid. That number goes up every day. Um, the Public Art Team is still well ahead of schedule compared to F Y twenty four. And we're looking forward to the F Y twenty six Art Bank Program and building out the grants administration calendar, reviewing and updating our requests for applications. Um, and we'll look for that to launch in mid-April. Um, next, we have an update on the F Y twenty five Color the Curb School Safety Program. Um, so applications for that closed on February third with eighteen completed applications submitted. Um, so the team has held orientation for the selection panel for that already. Um, where panelists learn about the evaluation criteria, do anti-bias training, conflict of interest, and learn about confidentiality as well. And then the panel review will take place on March third for that program. Um, we always work, welcome commissioners to serve as conveners. So if you're interested, please let us know. Um. The next update is on collections management. So the Public Art Team is currently organizing twenty five open requests. I think it was nineteen last time. Um, through the Art Bank Loan Program. Um, so this program continues to be in really high demand. Um, and these are vary from everything from uh, agency loan requests, expanding additional artwork in new office spaces. The installations and relocations if people are moving. Um, so it's, it's a lot of work that the team does to um. Make sure that there's artwork in, in different uh, district buildings. And then the team is also cataloging. The new F Y twenty five Art Bank ac- acquisitions into our um, collection management system. And those are actually now online. Um, so they're all viewable on our e-museum. Uh, the last update I have is around public art building communities. So one of the capacity building components to that program. That we do, uh, that we did recently was a Business of the Arts Professional Development Series that was held on January thirty first. Um, we had more than eighty um, people attend and participate. Uh, so our public arts coordinator, Carrie Kennedy, served as moderator. And then we had three different public art professionals share their experiences. So. Um, that is my update. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Great update. Any questions? Thank you, Corinne. And thank you, Carla. Uh, art education, Hector.
Yes, indeed. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I am a Latino white male, um, actually with white hair and wearing a green gray shirt. Um, the Arts Education Convention met on Tuesday, February uh, eleventh, uh, in attendance were myself and our commission chair, Reggie Van Lee. I certainly would like to encourage more participation from other commissioners. And I understand that unfortunately two of them were taken ill, so I, I'm sorry. But there were no decisions made on this particular meeting. Now, to report on the findings, um, I'd like to compliment Andrea Brown for actually working so diligently and making these programs truly work and resonate with the community. Um, Celebrate the Creative Spark is a residency program, actually. Um, is a program for local teaching artists and arts organizations who are interested in providing engaging arts education programming. For D C senior community, age fifty plus or pre-K to twelve D C P S students. Thirty five organizations and forty six individual applications were received together grants portal. And an additional fifteen application will receive via email. Due to an influx of applications, notifications will go out no later than Friday, February twenty first, that is tomorrow. And um, twenty applicants have been confirmed, twenty applicants will be accepted. Or rather, should I say, the acceptance deferred to fiscal year twenty six due to limitations of funds. And fifty six will be encouraged to apply again during the next round of um, of Celebrate the Creative Spark residence, residency. Or proposals. This is an acknowledgement of the fact that there is a demand, uh, actually for artists. Uh, to be able to participate in this program. The news has gotten out and there's been a lot of work being done by the commission in spreading the good news. Poetry Out Loud is another one that has already been discussed by our uh, executive director, Aaron Myers. However. Uh, this is the National Poetry Resitation Contest that invites local high school students to participate in a nationally recognized pre, pre. Twentieth Century Poetry Resitation Contest. Nine skilled teaching artists have been selected to provide recitation coaching at thirteen confirmed area high schools. This year's regional competition will take place on Saturday, March fifteenth. At Planet World Museum located at nine twenty five thirteen street northwest, Washington, D C, two zero zero five. Yours will be open at twelve and the show will conclude at three P M. A link to R S V P will be available on our website at D C Arts, D C, I'm sorry, D C Arts. Dot D C dot gov. I encourage you to participate. These are really exciting programs, so. I would like us to be able to actually go there and support our students. They're working very hard. These are very beautifully created programs, so your participation is very much encouraged. Um, for twenty twenty five summer internships, internships. Call for twenty twenty five summer interns went out on Monday, January sixth and close on, on Friday. January thirty first, the public arts events, um, communications, arts education and the resource allocation team. Received a total of seventy five applicants. Again, a very successful response. Uh, the in, the internship experience is slated to begin between May and June of summer twenty twenty five and will conclude. In August. Uh, this again is a program that is very supportive of our school and a lot of these. Students go into the arts world and um, actually are uh, very much contributing to the work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Hector. Any questions? Anyone? Questions?
Uh, first of all, I, I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I think that's great. It's wonderful. Um, I certainly plan to participate in that. And um.
You're welcome. Absolutely. Please do.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, this is written somewhere. So, you know, I can put it on my schedule and everything, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. Uh, Reggie, is this the time to talk about what we're doing or is this on new business? Cause it's sort of goals, goals with public art, but I didn't know.
You, you, you're welcome. Any other questions? Otherwise, you're welcome to proceed, Cor.
Okay, so many of you know that the Arts Commission for years have supported the work of uh, the program called Blacks and Wax. It's a live museum and we have done it uh, for nineteen years and twelve of those nineteen years, we've done it at the Kennedy Center. Um, I'm inviting all of you to join us. We do it at the ARC and we do it at the Kennedy Center. Well, this year, we have. As recent as, I guess, six hours ago formally declined the date. So we are not going to the Kennedy Center this year. Uh, it just became. It just became morally difficult to do. Uh, so we are uh, making a U-turn and going at, well. We chose to go to the Duke Ellington School of Art, Performing Arts, uh, of Arts. Uh, we've been offered many places to come, uh, in this environment that we're all in, but we chose the Duke Ellington because. Well, if any of y'all been there, it's a state of the art facility and it just makes sense. It's, it's um. It's a great facility. We've done a, 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 um. A walkthrough and so we've confirmed that we're going to be at Duke Ellington. So I'd like to send out information, invite all of you to come. It's Blacks and Wax this year. It's the anniversary of the nineteen sixty five Voting Rights Act then and now and its characters. And, and, and commentary and incidents that, that start at the Edmund Pettus Bridge. To the election of the most uh, recent um, senator from New York. I'm sorry, from Maryland. I'm so distracted. Angela Alter Brooks, but with, it's, it's a. Soundtrack, a music track and a dance track. So it'll be commentary, uh, and it'll be film and it'll be dance. It'll be singing. It'll be great. But it will be at Duke Ellington. Uh, we are not making a really big comment about it. We are going to, you know, issue a press release because we start our press next week. And if you are familiar with that, you know, we always end up on three or four television shows and many radio shows. And so we're not making a big deal out of it. We're just, you know, choosing this year not to be at the Kennedy Center. So.
So Cor, give us the dates both for the ARC and for.
ARC is uh, on the seventh of March. And the, and the Duke Ellington show is on the fifteenth of March, uh, and fifteenth of March at four thirty at Duke Ellington. And at the ARC, they have a matinee at one o'clock for seniors and for children and at six o'clock for the uh, for the community. So the ARC on the seventh at one and six and Duke Ellington on the fifteenth at four thirty.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Um, the last report will be on Art Week D C. Uh, as in our conversation with Mr. Campello, I made it known that we are still collecting feedback on the consultant's report. So that we can really evolve this plan so that it's fully owned by our constituents in a significant way. And I say that, uh, to say with an ambitious strategic plan to guide us. It's become clear that we need a full year to successfully execute the plan. And will therefore look to launching Art Week D C in twenty twenty six. We'll begin that planning immediately, but we need a full year of planning to make it a success. I had great aspirations for us doing something in twenty twenty five. But to incorporate the feedback we've gotten, to evolve it into a significant plan and to do a major event, well done. We've decided to launch it in twenty twenty six. So that's the update on Art Week D C. Um, I'll end before we uh, dismiss people by just reiterating what I said in my welcome remarks. That we are on course to do the right thing for the right people in the city of Washington, D C, in the nation's capital. We will continue. We will continue on that course. Uh, headwinds notwithstanding, external distractions notwithstanding, internal commotion notwithstanding. We are going to move ahead and you've heard some of the progress we've already made in bringing this capability to many more people, getting money out faster, et cetera. And we will continue to uh have this continuous improvement in how we serve our constituents, but know that the distractions around us are but distractions will continue the course. With that being said, there's no further business. The next meeting of the commission will be held uh March seventeenth, twenty twenty five at five thirty P M. The time is now six seventeen and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.